Hello? Are we all set? Okay. Good evening, this meeting is now convened, the time is 5:06 PM. I would like to ask everyone to please silence all cellphones. A quorum of the board is present in the board auditorium. They include Ms. Ozanne Bandy, Ms. Cruz Arnold, Ms. Garza Linder, Ms. Lamond Flowers, me, Mr. Campo, Mr. Martinez, Ms. Mendoza, and Mr. Revan. If there are any elected officials in the audience this evening, please stand and be recognized. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for being with us tonight.
I can't hear anything.
Our first order of business is to hear from speakers to agenda items. We are glad you are here and look forward to speaking from, to hearing from you. Public comment during school board meetings will only be available to those persons who have signed up to speak prior to the meeting time per current protocol. Verbal and other disruptions by persons during the school board meetings are not acceptable if they inhibit the board's ability to conduct business and the public's ability to observe these processes. Persons who participate in such behavior will be given one warning. If such behavior is repeated, they will be asked to leave the meeting. We have 29 speakers this evening. Each speaker will be given two minutes to address the board's board policy. He asks that you stay on topic and refrain from making individuals, especially students, as their identity is protected under law. You may name your child. I ask that you please respect our procedures and end your comments promptly. When your time has expired and the timer rings, if you assign other speakers via Zoom, we must see you live with your camera on as you speak. Tenemos que verlo en vivo por la cámara en lo que habla. The first item held for registered speakers is work session topic staff attendance. Michelle Williams, please come to the microphone. This speaker is also signed up to address other topics. Este orador también está apuntado para hablar de otros asuntos. Señora Williams, por favor. Sheriff Williams, este Houston Association, este... La ley 43 10, el control de nuevo al, el control de nuevo a las manos de los maestros. El distrito no puede penalizar este a... la secuencia de sujeto y el currículo requerido con un grado particular este basado en la determinación de los maestros, pero los maestros tienen tiempo más o menos en una área para demostrar daño y sabiduría en una área. Pedirán que todos los siguientes sean pasados desde NIS, NISA, puedan dar lecciones que llenan las necesidades de nuestros hijos. Para llevar estas directivas es una obligatoria fuerza a los maestros a que se hagan co-conspiradores y fallan a debatamente enseñar a los estudiantes en HISCs, a los miembros de la, a la, los, a los miembros de administradores. Ustedes aún han aprobado una póliza inhumana de asistencia. Señor Miles y la administración están negando este... días enfermos, los maestros han sido asaltados en lo que están en los este... en los campos de la escuela. Le han dicho a los maestros que tienen este la opción de irse si no están con la división. Entonces si esto es hecho, por favor, hagan que este los maestros puedan irse, que sanctionen sus contratos. La basura de un distrito es oro de otro distrito. Ustedes no respetan a los maestros de que se vayan a otro distrito que actualmente los aprecia su presencia. Our next speaker is Linda Murray, followed by Jay Allison Chaven. Este señora Murray.
Buenas tardes. Oye, yo soy una maestra retirada, ex-miembro de la mesa directiva y participante en HISCs. Soy una pagadora de impuestos y sé que no lo van a ver, pero soy una abuela. La gente se enferman. Me pregunto cómo es que yo hice durante todos esos años. La gente se enferma ahorita. Porque tengo una nieta en este la casa con este el flu. Tengo 15 niños este rededor con este la influenza. Ser alguien criminal por este enfermarse o decirles que no les van a dar un bono, eso es un disengénero, es una cosa disenguena. La gente se enferma y espero que como están viendo esta póliza, espero que no haya pasado. Ustedes tienen puntos que si la persona se enferma fuera del control, si les, si se fueron a algún lado, eh, anden de su gente y su póliza de las maestros es este horrible. Y el esperar que ellos estén aquí todos los días para que les den un bono hasta febrero es injusto, no saber lo que va a pasar.
Our next speaker is Jay Allison Chaven.
¿Está aquí?
No, okay. The next item held for registered speakers is work session topic student discipline. Our first speaker is Anita Wardwell. ¿Pueden este hacer este venir al micrófono?
My name is Anita, I'm here to speak on behalf of an educator who fears retribution for standing up for what is best and right for her students. This is her two cents. I'm a proud educator or at least used to before this takeover. Now I'm a script reader, a curriculum editor, and a fear reenforcer. I would have been here today to read this myself had I not been forced threatening to stay for Demo Day. Which I'm unsure if we're being paid for because there's still that no criteria for this cycle. Miles often uses analogies comparing us teachers and doctors of surgeons. Would you send your child to a surgeon if he knew that all of his scalpelers or surgical materials were incorrect, broken? Or a doctor who caused them fear could not treat them? Would you send them to a doctor that always had their administrator in the office contradicting what they're supposed to do? That's every day in the classroom, incorrect curriculum that's widening the learning gap. Students crying daily under fear of confusion. In addition to campus district administrators in the classrooms daily with contradictory feedback and making threats that the system is not implementing with fidelity. The system is not sustainable for students or teachers. We deserve a district that cares. Board of administrators, if this is a system, is as impactful as stated, I urge you to implement this in all affluent schools. Angie, I know you as a former educator, a respected educator. Your brothers and sisters, we are terrified. I don't teach in HISC, I'm teaching in a different district. I have a doctorate from Harvard, masters in creative writing. I've written books on distorted justice. Nothing, and I never talk about my credentials, but that's what people seem to care about, okay? We want to walk off of the job. We are like literally dying. Like my daughter, see, I just want to leave. And it's not because of the kids, it's because of the adults. Adult behaviors don't change, blah, blah, blah. You remember that conversation? And you remember how I brought up race and gender and everyone acted like I was a jackass? You are here doing things that need to be implemented with rich kids too. So remember that when we try to shut their libraries down. Our next speaker is Jessica Campos, followed by Selena Manzano. Los próximas personas, por favor, este venga al micrófono señora Rojas. Por favor, no interrumpan, no falten al respeto y no hagan bullying. Estas son las reglas que son las únicas cosas que dejan, que se ponen en las paredes. No hay colores en las paredes, han quitado el felicidad de nuestra escuela cuando le forzaron a que quitaran las cosas. Ironically, from the moment that this hostile takeover began, TEA has repeatedly violated every one of those rules. They have undeniably disrupted our children's education, emotional, and social growth. They disrupted our communities and destroyed our schools. They have resorted to bullying and threatening our teachers that are speaking up and standing up for our children. Our schools under superintendent Mike Miles are bringing our children and our community to less value. When will this madness end? How can we trust the plan to execute new education system? What is going to happen? Has been built on lies and deceit. With all the chaos and everything gone wrong and no one held accountable. We should be paying attention and questioning everything they are doing to our schools. Everyone, when all the negative effects of the TEA takeover in our neighborhood schools are urged to sign the petition. And HoustonCBPE.org. And to invite others to sign. Tell them that the community will not accept their disruption, disrespect, and their bullying of our children, families, and teachers. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Selena Manzano.
¿Señora Manzano está aquí?
Our next speaker is Sophie Grace Rojas.
Hello, my name is Sophie Ellen Grace Rojas. I say that so many times and I always will. Cuando yo estaba muy enferma y mi este cabeza dolía muy fuerte, cuando iba a la enfermera, la enfermera no estaba allí. Y mi cabeza me dolía mucho, casi me caí en el piso, pero de suerte mi amiga estaba ahí. No con la enfermera. Eh, acaben a la escuela y estoy muy cansada de ir y aún estoy aquí orando porque yo quiero que él me escuche de nuevo y de nuevo y de nuevo hasta que yo me muera. I'm sorry. I'm so tired of looking at my work and tired of... Estoy tan cansada de ver mi trabajo en un este, en un reloj. Siento que he fallado a todos y en todo. Tienes a mi mamá viendo en un teléfono y en una computadora trabajando y lo odio porque nadie me, te pone atención porque es él. Él me quita a mi mamá y la quiero de nuevo, la cambió y la cambió mucho. Y de nuevo, quiero mis maestros de nuevo, quiero mis escuelas de nuevo y quiero que él se vaya.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Annalisa Espinosa.
La señora Espinosa.
Is that good?
Yes.
Thank you. Education shouldn't be about children's test scores. It should be about teaching children to create a future worth living. To make smart choices as they grow. It's a teacher does not make mistakes that were made in the past. It's to give opportunity to less fortunate and better future. For the generations to come after we are gone. I feel that you truly underestimate the negative impact that your decisions cause. Do you truly believe in what you're doing? Trying to program machines to learn a certain way? Guarantee that the generations that are going to come will ensure the safety of our future? All for higher test scores? The whole reason is to start. Because children are not motivated enough to reach their highest potential. But what you're doing is improving. They're just working endlessly like a race to nowhere. When all is done, what you're seeing is the faces that were taught to be controlled. When suicide rates go up because you are too selfish to tend to our needs. When you cause anxiety when children have anxiety, when they go by, knowing that what's the time of? They can't do anything about it. Now that you're giving races to uncertified teachers, you can't hire a senior at my school because you spend too much money. Our education is ran by a computer resident, a person who can actually differentiate what's appropriate and what's to adult for class material. We now rely on an artificial intelligence rather than our own minds. Thanks.
Una inteligencia artificial en vez de nuestras propias mentes.
The next item held for registered speakers is work session topic special education presentation. Please approach the microphone. Speaker will be followed by Veronica Cofetero, who is also signed up for other topics.
My name is Meg Jeff, and I'm a special ed advocate. I've talked about this four or five times at board meetings and community meetings. Necesidades de educación especial. Tienen que acerca de esto de nuevo porque no me están escuchando. Yo soy una especialista líder para mejorar la lectura, las habilidades. Tienen que comenzar en el prique y este con un patólogo de la bracada clase. Los este estudiantes de menor recursos, recursos vienen con 1500, de medio clase viene con 15.000 palabras. Entonces cuando ellos llegan al kindergarten, ellos ya están entrando con una discapacidad de lectura. El, la patólogo de la habla es este importante y es una... Si no tiene lenguaje no pueden leer. Si un niño, el hecho de que ustedes no entienden el papel de el desarrollo de niños es algo que no se ha escuchado. El desarrollo no deja de desarrollar cuando entra en kindergarten. El patólogo tiene que ser parte de su este currículo hasta el quinto grado. El hecho de que están este despidiendo a todos los patólogos es increíble. Este, no sé cómo pueden ignorar las claves para el éxito. Las personas que tienen el patólogo en su este plan educativo individual deberían tener sus servicios. Hay muchas escuelas que no tienen patólogos y se, estudiantes que no están recibiendo servicios. Esto es ilegal. Este entrenando a los padres para que hagan quejas porque ustedes tienen que hacer lo necesario en su plan educativo individual. Los estudiantes no tienen tiempo para esperar, esto es vida verdadera y está ocurriendo ahorita. No entiendo su odio por la educación especial. Como psicólogo yo me he sentido en unas este juntas. Eh, tengo 30 años de experiencia, una maestría en este aprendizaje de discapacidades. Se los dije entonces y se los dije ahora. No siguen, no pueden seguir avanzando.
Our next speaker is Veronica Cofetero.
¿Es Veronica Cofetero?
Hello, my name is Veronica Cofetero. Yo soy madre de estudiantes en HISCs. Uno en Benavides, uno en St. George, y uno en Pino. Cada uno está en programas de educación especial. Que ustedes para dieran su ayuda por el año pasado, el director en Benavides. No hace, este, este, con viendo culturalmente a sus necesidades. Y este año nos presentaron, expresamos nuestros problemas, pero se ve que los cambios no han sido apropiados. Todo cambio es bueno si este cambio viene de un líder que respete este y con dignidad a los padres y maestros. Este director no tiene este respeto para los estudiantes. Mi hijo casi este se fue este aplastado por una este magia de madres. Tengan en mente que él tiene tres años y en una clase de educación especial. Mi hijo cruzó todo el campus para llegar a la escuela y en sus clases. Hay este puertas para llegar a la calle, si no, como no hay seguridad en la escuela, porque si él sola pudiera entrar y le pudieran pedir que abriera la puerta. A él pues sí le pudieran decir que abriera la puerta, que hubiera pasado. Pudido haber sido adoptado, este tuve suerte que no pasó nada. Y próximamente, esta es una de las razones principales que siempre hemos pedido que un policial de la HISC esté en la escuela, por lo menos en la mañana y por lo menos en la tarde. Por la tarde, este por lo menos este en la escuela ni hay este... Las cosas necesarias para extender la higiene. Eh, está podriéndose la escuela por dentro. Nosotros somos una banda de padres que están cansados de caer en oídos sordos. Eh, este por favor, este, que mejor eren y este enseñen mejor a los estudiantes. No importa que tan malo sea el currículo, no van a este sobrepasar estos traumas. Nuestros próximos oradores son Jane Frio y Nancy Dawson.
Good evening, my name is Jane Frio. I'm an HISC parent of a student receiving special education in HISC. My understanding is that tonight there'll be a special education presentation, but I can't comment on it specifically because it hasn't been made public. So I would like to remind you as the board managers is this, that two and a half years ago, the TEA came here to investigate HISC's special education and found so many serious issues that were so bad that the TEA had to send their own monitors to HISC to oversee these corrective actions. And we've never really heard what happened after that. So we're anxiously awaiting tonight's presentation to see how HISC plans to ensure corrective actions are made now that you, this board of managers and this superintendent have been selected for this very important and long overdue task. I hope by now you are familiar with the TEA corrective investigative report like I am. If you aren't, these are some of the issues the report should address when you see it tonight. There should be new policies and procedures for special education. There should be new systems for requiring campuses to follow legal requirements. There should be data-driven methodology for determining whether skills, technology, professional development are being implemented. And there needs to be new systems to let parents like me know whether or not my child's IEP is being implemented and if data collected about my child's progress is even valid. Regarding the principal evaluation, which I also signed up to speak on, I would like to ask why special education metrics are only being used in a principal's evaluation for one school year and not every year after that. This seems inadequate and very short sighted. Regarding the 20% special education that comprises the principal's evaluation, where is the compliance rubric that makes the principal's evaluation? I would like to see it, I think the public is due to that. Regarding the other 10 percent that's comprised of the new reading and math assessment scores, where is it documented what accommodations were offered to my child? If she took the test, I don't know. Thank you.
Nuestro próximo orador es Nancy Dawson.
I'm Nancy Dawson, I'm concerned...
Soy Nancy Dawson. Tengo preocupación, ¿puede acercarse más al micrófono?
Yo soy un defensor de la educación. Okay, I just need to be really close. Okay. Today I was asked to be here on behalf of a special education teacher who is not able to speak for a year of retaliation. Pero tuvo miedo a tenir porque querer haber represalias en contra de ella. Cuando los maestros están bajo el tiempo limitado para dar su instrucción y que los maestros están rompiendo las leyes cuando no pueden dar las adaptaciones para los alumnos de educación especial. Para que ellos puedan cumplir con las expectaciones de esta regla de educación que han puesto.
Doing the LSAE worksheets are supposed to do, they need differentiation. All students walk in, sit down, work silently. No one knows if a student has special needs or not. Therefore, this kind of differentiation, does it just not work? It also does not count for the legally required minutes a student is supposed to get from someone who understands their disabilities, such as a special ed teacher. Third, oral administration. Some special ed students are supposed to have oral administration on things like quizzes. Students should have their quiz or DOL read to them as needed with only 10 minutes and so many students waiting for a teacher to help them. And they, they don't get the help, they need it and they're blamed for not completing the work because the teacher is providing this accommodation to many others. Finally, the last issue is that students are that are special ed students that are emergent by rule are not getting the services that they need as well and can't complete their work on time. Finally, all of these issues highlight that teachers are put in a position of either helping their students or breaking the law, and that's unconscionable.
Están rompiendo la ley. Our next speaker is registered to address the board via Zoom. Ms. Smith, please admit Katie Morgan.
El micrófono Katie Morgan.
She's not there.
No está aquí.
Morgan is not there. The next item held for registered.
El siguiente punto.
Okay, well, let them figure that out and we'll come back to her if we can get it in. The next item held for registered speakers is work session topic new education system recapitulation. Will Courtney Revels please come to the microphone?
Por favor, pasa el micrófono.
The speaker is also signed up for a closed session item.
Y también se le asignó para un punto de eh al cerrar la sesión.
Our next speaker on this topic is registered. Is registered to address the board via Zoom. Ms. Smith, please admit Natalie Reina. Oh, okay, wonderful.
Gracias.
Hello, I'm speaking as one of four former employees of H I S D to give my experience within N E S aligned campus and the leadership at that school. I was hired to be a teacher apprentice but was told on the first day of school that I would be covering for an art of thinking position, which was considerably more responsibility and I was given no support from leadership. I was teaching third, fourth and fifth grade three times a week. It was a great experience in the sense that I got to know the students in kinder, first, third, fourth and fifth grades and I can speak to the ineffectiveness of the N E S at all those levels. I don't agree with libraries being replaced by detention centers, which was actually thankfully not true on my campus. The library was being used as a pre-k classroom because of an air conditioning problem and I had never heard of it being used as a detention center, nor do I think it will be likely. I don't agree with the way lessons are timed and structured. The content in the pre-made instructional slides is mediocre and there is no time for reviewing anything and no room for instructional scaffolding for students who do not understand, know how to speak, read or write English fluently. I believe it is an extremely unfair system for disadvantaged students and also to teachers who are expected to stand all day and wear microphones to supposedly project their classrooms via Zoom to students who would be sent to the detention center. The leadership at Gallegos Elementary is demeaning to teachers, shaming their personalities and making them feel like the problem when the real problem is the system. They create a toxic work environment and intimidate people with their attitudes. Any financial benefit offered does not outweigh the disadvantages. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The next item held for registered speakers is work session topic principal evaluation. Will Judith Cruz please approach the microphone? If Ms. Blueford Daniels is here, she will be asked. Ms. Cruz, please go ahead.
Buenas noches, members of the board and Superintendent Miles. I applaud you for recognizing the critical role that high-quality supportive school administrators play in instruction and teacher retention. This was the most significant factor identified by Houston educators of color who participated in focus groups conducted by Ed Trust and Teach Plus. Thank you for bringing long-needed accountability to our schools and that starts by evaluating school leaders based on the outcomes of our students. As Superintendent Miles has stated, the opportunity gap is growing as well as the year twenty thirty-five competency gaps. To address the challenges of a changing workforce, H I S D must focus on developing the knowledge and skills that students will need for continued learning and future credentials, not just the first one after high school. Students readiness for post-secondary success should be the guiding objective for any measurement of student achievement. I ask you to consider including the following metrics of high school principals' performance: the percentage of students who earn a passing T S I score, who earn credit in advanced coursework, who earn an I B C level one or level two certification, who enroll in college immediately after graduation or who earn an associate degree prior to graduation. And for middle school principals, consider including the percentage of students who complete advanced coursework such as Algebra I, which opens the doors for students to pursue careers in STEM. Our students have so much potential in our ever-changing and technology-driven economy. They will be the creators of A I and much more. Please ensure H I S D principal evaluation contains metrics, just as your H B three goal will, that reinforce the primary mission of ensuring our students are better prepared for their post-secondary journey.
Gracias. Thank you, Ms. Cruz, and thank you for your for being here this evening, thank you for your service.
Gracias por venir aquí, gracias por su vida.
Is Ms. Kathy Blueford Daniels here? She's signed up to speak. Our next speaker registered is Xavier Mickens.
Personal micrófonos, no hay tendencias.
Will be followed by Dr. Anne McCoy.
Y se va a seguir después el doctor McCoy.
Good evening, my name is Xavier Mickens and I'm an H I S D graduate who's here to speak on behalf of a teacher that did not, that could not be here due to fear of retaliation. During the summer, H I S D leadership gave schools the choice to become N S A, N E S aligned schools with promises of ten thousand dollars titles. Teachers were told that if they did not opt in, they would be reconstituted the next year. The district then released a compensation manual with no writing that provides teachers with a date of payment. When asked about this omission, leadership claimed it was a typo. Teachers are being manipulated by the system and are not being treated as professionals. Either fix the manual or allow teachers to the normal duty hours written in their contracts. Teachers deserve to have their contract and the seven point seven five hours on their pay stub honored. They should not have to fulfill seven hours of extra duty per week for free with no promises of compensation. The district has since provided dates but still no stipulations on how to earn it and the amount of hours teachers will work and writing, stop abusing their time.
Las horas que están trabajando.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Dr. Anne McCoy followed by Ruth Kravitz.
El doctor McCoy después de Ruth Kravitz.
I am Dr. Anne McCoy and I spent most of my career conducting evaluations of educational interventions. And so as I have read this measuring principal effectiveness document, I want to call your attention to pages ten and eleven in this document. First, I want to say that the use of test scores to evaluate teachers and principals constitutes an inappropriate use of student test scores. This is both, from a research perspective, this is both unethical and methodologically unsound. On page ten, we have a presentation of how the growth scores of students will be calculated. So we have two groups of students with four different ways of computing their growth scores. If a student, if students were in H I S D last year, their twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three end-of-year test scores will be compared to the middle-of-year and end-of-year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four test scores. If students were not enrolled in H I S D last year, their twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four middle-of-year, end-of-year test scores will be compared to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four beginning-of-year test scores. So the manner in which growth is measured for all students should be the same. Decide which is it going to be. To use scores from end-of-year tests in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three school year for comparisons and accurately measure the performance of students during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. The second thing I want to call your attention to is that you need to take a look at the quality instruction item on page eleven. I'm going to sit down because using these composite test scores of observations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank, thank you.
Gracias, gracias.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gracias, gracias.
Our next speaker is Ruth Kravitz.
La siguiente persona es Ruth Kravitz.
Following Ms. Kravitz will be Maria Benazan, who is registered to address the board via Zoom. Ms. Kravitz, please.
Thank you. I know that everyone here believes in the power and the promise of the public education for all children, including children with disabilities and children, including children who are new immigrants, including children who sleep four to a bed in apartments without air conditioning, without Wi-Fi, without books and without nearby grocery stores. I know we all want what is best for our kids, but we have different methods. So what I want you to, what I want to tell you tonight, Mike Miles, the T E A and the board, what you're doing is not improving our schools. You want to fire award-winning beloved teachers because they raised their hand at a faculty meeting to ask a question. You have threatened other teachers with removal if they speak at board meetings. But teachers have a free speech right to speak about matters of public concern. You cannot demand their silence on all things. You are also silencing our children. You do not have speech therapists for students at many campuses. You got rid of school psychologists, the autism support team, the homeless department, the records department, the fine arts department, the music department. You even canceled contracts with literacy advance that helps students become stronger readers, enough is enough. You require seven-year-olds to watch your thrown-together PowerPoints and chat G P T and take a test every day over material they haven't had time to learn and then rush to a new lesson the next day. When your lessons are full of errors or just plain wrong, you blame teachers for not fixing them. When teachers develop stimulating lessons, you chastise them for deviating from your model. They cannot win for losing. You're told, teachers, that you directly disapprove of extra activities like field trips to the Museum of Natural Science, saying that this interferes with high-quality instruction. But kids learn best in welcoming environments. Yours is not. This is real stuff happening to real children in real time under our watch. We need to stop this experiment, join Houston C V P E dot org. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Maria Benazan, who's via Zoom. Ms. Smith, will you admit her, please?
Ms. Benazan, you may begin. Thank you. Hi, my name is Dr. Maria Benazan and I'm a community leader and educational researcher. I'm here to give my two cents regarding principal evaluation. By the way, happy Principal Appreciation Month to all the hard-working principals who strive to build staff capacity in a high-performance school culture by listening to concerns and honoring the voices of teachers, students and parents. Also, happy Principal Appreciation Month to the leaders who have not read about the LEAD system. This new H I S D principal evaluation system seems to set principals up to fail. Specifically, the applied bell curve forces leaders to be labeled as poor, average or good, relative to each other. This is not an evaluation based on actual performance, but performance against other regardless of varying school challenges and advantages. Educational research has shown that instead of encouraging motivation and innovation, bell curves create anxiety and lead to lessening performance. On page fifteen of the document, the author states that quote, "The method of linking cut points to a target distribution is an elegant solution to this problem of ensuring equal rigor across the system." Furthermore, the district may adjust the initial cut score of cut points after each evaluation cycle. This is done to ensure evaluations are rigorous and fair and no component is too easy or too hard. However, this system seems to suggest that a principal's evaluation is not about having a clear target, but a moving target. So principals will be working toward a blurry, elusive or even arbitrary goal. Best practice is for leaders to have clear objectives and goals. Happy Principal Appreciation Month to all the leaders who have stepped away because they recognize many of H I S D's new practices are not based on what we have learned works best for children and because educators and children are more than a test.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item held for registered speakers is new evaluation system for principals from the October twelfth draft agenda packet. Will Savant Moore please come to the microphone? This speaker will be followed by Placido Gomez. Mr. Moore.
After the meeting, I'm going to have to leave and make it to my daughter's volleyball game. It's crucial to recognize that the leader effectiveness in developmental system while well-intentioned may sometimes present an incomplete picture of a principal's performance. Principals working in challenging environments where students face significant obstacles often have an uphill battle. That alone may not capture the full extent of their dedication and effectiveness. These principals might be high performers who face greater odds due to factors beyond their control such as student population dynamics, socioeconomic challenges or the quality of facilities. Comparing them directly to counterparts in more favorable circumstance can be misleading. To ensure fairness, we must consider these contextual factors when evaluating their performance in determining compensation. These principals who persevere against the odds deserve recognition and equitable compensation for their dedication to providing quality education under challenging conditions. It's essential that our evaluation system reflects the nuances of their roles and the unique challenges they face in their quest to foster student success. It's imperative that we implement a safeguard to ensure that principals facing greater odds, despite the challenges outside of student achievement, receive the recognition and bonus they deserve. Their dedication to impact on a school community should not be overshadowed as they may not truly be low-achieving when considered a broader context. This safeguard will help maintain fairness and equity in our compensation system. Board of managers, please demand a safeguard. The community deserves assistance from principals and this will help ensure that. I agree with the superintendent, educators deserve higher compensation. I just want to ensure that this is across the board, especially when I know the challenges on my side of town that they face daily. And to the community, I'm a parent. I need you to start volunteering at these N E S schools. I need you to start applying to open positions and I need you to donate. There's so much red tape, we can't get donations, we don't have the resources. We don't have filter water, we don't have ice, we just got books. We need your help, community. Volunteer, apply, donate. God bless all of you.
Our next speaker is Placido Gomez. Mr. Gomez, please go ahead.
Señor Gomez. Thank you so much. Mr. Miles, the board of managers like y'all, I've had hundreds of conversations over the last few months about what people are concerned about. And one of the things that's really risen to the top is the school climate and culture. And because of this, I was pleased to see in the principal evaluation that part of the evaluation had metrics on school climate and culture. Unfortunately, it looks like that won't be applicable for this year. I'm not sure why that is, but if I had to guess, it's probably because the instruments that you want to develop internally may not be ready for this year when you plan to use it in the following years. My suggestion would be to use a vendor in this case. I would almost never suggest using vendors as a general principle. I applaud your views of wanting to do more things internally. But in this case, with school climate and culture being such an important issue, I strongly suggest using a vendor for using part of the principal evaluation. And since I have a little more time, then I thought I would have some suggestions and thoughts about school climate and culture. One of those is teacher autonomy. There are some, there's time and place for giving directives. For example, don't use balance literacy, new science of reading. But the implementation of how that's done, teachers like myself do better when there's some choice involved. There are some people at my former campus who thrive using Doug Blomhoff's teaching like a champion book. My style was different, but it was also effective. And so different ways of making choices that needs to be the case. Also, fun in the school is not the enemy of this plan or student outcomes. There's embarrassing videos of the whole never seen light of day of me rapping my students that was not really on the best plan that was given to me. But things like that maybe will class favorite and things like that may be effective as a teacher. And while sounding superficial, it did rise in my view in my classroom. So fun is not the enemy of student outcomes. Make sure teachers and students have some level of a time. Thank you.
The next item held for registered speakers is October budget amendment from the October draft agenda packet. Will Diana Candida please come to the microphone?
Señora Candida, por favor, venga al micrófono.
Hello, my name is Diana Candida. My seven-year-old son attends a dual-language school. And though it is not N E S or N E S aligned, the new policies being implemented in District Y have led to a worse learning experience for him. As a taxpayer who did not elect this board, I am angry about H I S D's mismanagement of money. Funding used as a way to coerce compliance, hence the N E S curriculum being taught at my son's school. The dilution of dual-language programs across H I S D diminishes the quality of proven benefits of such programs and risks the loss of funding to H I S D. Librarians have been removed from schools whose children have been seeking access to books and the encouragement and guidance from qualified professionals. Special education staff have been let go, again primarily in the schools where the services are most needed. Teachers are being fired for asking questions and advocating for their students. Fearing retribution, many others quietly comply but are extremely stressed and then happy. This will result in a brain drain that H I S D cannot This will result in a brain drain that HISD cannot easily recover from. Devoting up to sixty percent of time testing students instead of encouraging them to be curious and interested in learning will have detrimental effects now and in the future. Pay Mike Miles while he destroys our schools and breaks the spirit of our children's irresponsible. I believe giving all children access to high-quality public education is imperative as it helps not just the children themselves, but society as a whole. Mike Miles is destroying HISD. He has to go. He has to go.
The next item held for registered speakers is minutes from previous meetings from the October twelfth draft agenda packet. Will Nicole Castaneda please come to the microphone?
Por favor, Nicole Castaneda, venga. Esta oradora va a ser seguida por la señora Hurley. Señora Castaneda, ¿está aquí?
I don't see her. Is Christine Hurley here?
Sí.
To quote Mike Miles on the board, every school in HISD will meet the needs of all students, except they have blessed a speech and autism. An HISD spokesperson claimed there was no disruption in speech service delivery despite numerous schools no longer having a speech therapist. Multiple teachers have reported they've been specifically told they cannot follow five oh four and IP accommodations, which are protected by federal law. This is a critical evaluation system. Twenty percent are protected by the student test and ten percent from legal compliance. Neither will be met because of the actions of Mike Miles and the board.
The schools are failing because of education fails. People who don't care for representatives who represent HISD families. Regarding vouchers, the executive director says that vouchers have eroded our democracy. Local community schools have elected leaders who are required to be accountable to all taxpayers, provide full transparency, accountability. That is a democracy. Private schools are far removed from elector. Vouchers will tax everyone. We'll tax but have no representation of schools. Taxation without representation runs out of American values. Article seven, section one of the text of the statute says, "The general constitution of knowledge being a central preservation of the liberties of the people." It should be the duty of the state to establish and make suitable provisions for a public school. The American law cannot be outsourced to private schools. The American law cannot be outsourced to private schools. If our state and nation are going to continue to thrive, we must not invade our public schools. Please file complaints with the Office of Civil Rights for said violations and protest to Freedom of Education Services for free legal services at HISD's DRTX dot com.
Thank you. Our next speakers on this topic are registered and address the board via Zoom. Ms. Smith, please identify our speakers.
Por favor, identifique.
Audrey Nath, please turn your camera on. You may begin.
Por favor, en la cámara y puede comenzar.
Ms. Nath, you may begin. Please turn your camera on.
Puede comenzar. Prende la cámara.
Do you want to try to come back?
Yeah, let's try to come back.
Ms. Ariano, please turn your camera on.
Señora Ariano, por favor, prende la cámara y puede comenzar.
Thank you, one second.
Gracias, un segundo.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Today on World Teachers Day, I speak as concerned by HISD. I share the world's concern for HISD. I'm hesitant to speak openly about the state of education in HISD. The emotions noble of the development of English in the domain. These persons have been neglecting the curriculum of Mike Miles. He despises the phonics and alphabetization. HISD has seized resources, violating regulations for English learners. Schools have cut off all avenues for students to learn English. Organizations with endless profits. Many of these students have gone through a lot of trauma to reach their places as professors. Many times, we can't fulfill their needs because of the rigid schedules and administrative pressures imposed by this administration. This eliminates the humanization of students. The most vulnerable are pushed out of schools. My support for you to continue to organize your voices against this administration. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to the future of our children in our community.
Gracias por su compromiso a la comunidad y a nuestros niños.
Were we able to get Ms. Nath on?
It looks like the audio and camera are not on.
Parece que el audio no es disponible.
The next item held for registered speakers is closed session personnel item B. Will Ruth Hoffman-Lack please come to the microphone?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Ruth Hoffman-Lack. I'm a school psychologist. One thing most people think school psychologists deal with children who have psychotic breaks, which we do. But really, what we do is anything that keeps a kid from doing well. School is our problem. So we assess for learning difficulties, developmental delays, emotional disturbance. We put in place interventions to deal with kids who are having a hard time learning. We teach teachers how to teach those kids. And one of the things that we're really sticking for data. Because a kid in the time that we have in them is critical. There's no, you don't get to redo it. This is only the now. So as a school psychologist, I'm required by my ethical principles and by the ethics of my profession. If I have put an intervention in place, I have to keep data, and I have to make sure that progress is being made in a reasonable amount of time, not three months. If I'm doing a math intervention with a child, I need to see that after a couple of weeks of it, we're moving in the right direction. If not, I'm ethically bound to say, you know what? This particular intervention, even though it's evidence-based and research-based, is not working with this kid, and so I need to put in something else. I am here to encourage you to have a short section of time when you are deciding whether progress is being made under the current plan. Because if we wait an entire year to decide if the plan that is being put in place now that so many people are upset about. If we wait to see if that works for a whole year, we've lost a year that is so much bigger than a year in the impact of child education. So I would urge you to, when you as a board, your only job is to evaluate whether Mr. Miles is doing his job and whether his plan is working. I understand you can't do anything about his curriculum. That's his thing. You hire him, and you have to evaluate him. Please don't wait until the end of the year to decide what's being placed. If it's working.
Are there any of the folks that were on Zoom that were not available now?
¿Ahora están disponibles?
What's that? Okay.
Audrey Nath, if you're available, please turn your camera on. You may begin speaking.
Por favor, prende la cámara y puede comenzar a orar.
Yep. Okay. That concludes our hearing of registered speakers for this meeting. Thank you to all the speakers. We appreciate being here with us. Now, we're going to move on to a presentation by Mr. Miles, who has some information to share on the board.
Y tenemos alguna información que quiera compartir con esta mesa directiva.
Mr. Miles, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We have a series of presentations tonight from our staff. You'll see them outlined there. And I'll have different people come up and do their presentation. And then we'll stop after each one so that you can ask questions so we don't have to wait till the end. And obviously, if there's something burning and you have to interrupt, that's fine, too. By way of preamble, though, I need to keep reminding us of the nature of the challenge and about the progress we're already seeing. So the nature of the challenge is this is the last generation of students in school before the skills gap is locked down. We're going to get some data from TEA pretty soon. You've seen the data, but this will confirm what I've been saying all along. And that is, we're probably going to have many DNF schools, at least seventy, maybe closer to eighty. Things have not improved over the last twenty years in HISD. And the gap is still the same, and so we're that far behind. So the fact that there are a lot of challenges in the district, that's clear. You'll hear tonight some of the systems problems we've had. And I'll do a longer presentation at some other time about all the infrastructure and all the other problems. But we've also had challenges with culture, and we had challenges with the quality of our instruction in this district over many years. So it's understandable that there's anxiety around raising that quality of instruction and raising expectations. At the same time, having said all that, I've been in twenty-three, twenty-four schools since the beginning of the year. Thank you, board members, for coming in the first and second week. But I can assure you, in the last couple of weeks, things have even been better than what you saw. And what you saw was people really trying to do well in the model. And you saw teachers teaching well and continuously improving. And then you saw kids doing well, too. I have yet, I've been in twenty-three of these NES and NES-aligned schools. I've yet to see one student in the team center who's there for a timeout. That doesn't mean it doesn't happen. We're going to show you some data tonight that there's some kids who've been sent to the team center, but the discipline problems are way low. Staff attendance is up, and the quality of instruction is improving slowly. Now, we've got a long way to go. No question, can't turn the ship. The analogy of a ship is appropriate because we see the future. We see, kind of like an iceberg, and we're trying to turn this ship so that our fate for our kids and their future is solid and prepared. And we don't have a train wreck, a shipwreck, you know, their futures. And so that's the magnitude of it. We could argue about the menu, and we could argue about the deck chairs. But in the end of the day, this is a big problem. This is for serious people, and this is serious time. Let me give you some data on how things are doing so far. So the first presenter will be Mel de Villaguardia, and she will talk about teacher attendance.
La asistencia comparativa, ahí están los datos de asistencia comparativa.
Good evening, Board Manager, President, Ms. Mo Ma. I'm Ms. De La Wadia, Division Superintendent for the South. And tonight, I'll be sharing some data with you. And we'll start with this first slide. We'll take you through this. This is basically the first five weeks of school, year-over-year data that we're looking at from last year. The light blue is data from twenty-two, twenty-three, and the dark blue is twenty-three, twenty-four. And if you see at the very bottom at the footnote, it does include the protected LEED, and we have listed the types of LEED that are included in this data. So as you can see from last year, we've actually improved by thirty-seven percent. And those are all types of absences that include the protected LEED. And then the one right next to it is without the protected LEED. So we see again twenty-one percent improvement. And we also see the FMLA. So we went from six hundred and thirty-one to a hundred and eighty-nine, which is a decrease from last year. The following slide is broken down by division. And what we did is we took the attendance of any teacher that had ten or more in this slide, and we broke it down once again, and then those that had twenty or more. So you can see where it says all. It is inclusive of the protected LEED. And when you look at the division in Central, you see a decline of sixty-three percent. And you see the raw numbers there in the graph. We also see in the North that there was a decrease of thirty-eight percent. In the South, we had a decrease of fifty-seven percent. And in the West, of forty-two percent. So as you can see, the trend, as you can see from last year to this year, and this does include the protected LEED. The next slide is without LEED. And that's a point to note. Once again, we broke it down by division. And so as you can see again, a decrease by thirty-seven percent for the Central Division. Forty-four percent, which is a decrease in the North Division. Fifty-six percent in the South. And then the West had fifty percent. Once again, the numbers that are listed in the bar graph are the raw numbers for those particular years. The next slide is important. This is the NES and NESA campuses. And so once again, here we have the schools where we see again great attendance that's happening at the NESA. We have in Central, we had a seventy-three percent decline. Forty-three percent in the Absences. In North Division, we had forty-three percent. In the South, we only have NESA. We have twenty-four NESA. And at those particular campuses, we did not have anyone with ten or more or even twenty or more. In the West, you see again just a slight because the number is such a small number. You saw a little bit of an uptick. But overall, we saw those, and these are again without the protected LEED. So that way, it doesn't include the areas that are listed below. The last slide, which we call per pupil unit allocation, as noted by finance, it is our non-NES campuses. And here, we did the same visual for you in the graph that indicates again a slight decline for Central. We have a big decline in the North by eighty-eight percent. In the South, we had twenty-three percent. And the West was seventy-two percent. So as you can see, we're seeing great teacher attendance. And we've worked very closely with principals on monitoring and really supporting teachers through this process. Any questions? Any questions? Please.
Mr. Ivan?
Just on the baseline, I just want to make sure I understand. We're looking at data from the year to now. What's the certain date?
Yes, it's five weeks. So we actually took it from, this year, we started August twenty-eighth, and we ran it through September twenty-ninth. So five weeks of this year and the five weeks of last year. So it's year-over-year.
What would you say is important? For five weeks of this year and the five weeks of last year. So it's year-over-year. And what would you say is important? What about what they know and are able to do? What's the importance of attendance in relationship?
Well, absolutely. That's a great question. It's important because, as we all know, that teacher is that direct impact and instruction. And students need type-4 instruction every day. So that teacher being present, being prepared with their lessons, the students rely on that teacher every single day. So that's key. You know, just like when students aren't present, they're not learning. And when teachers are absent, they, once again, the students aren't receiving instruction. That's necessary to meet all the standards and expectations. Yes, sir. That's very important.
When a teacher's absent, who steps in? A substitute teacher or teacher assistant? How's that work?
So normally, when in our NES schools, we have our teacher apprentices. So those are teachers that work alongside our teacher. So it's a seamless approach. So... So those teachers that are in the classroom every day with students at the NES and NESA, that teacher apprentice would be the person that would be working with the students. Of course, in our non-NES, we would, of course, make sure whether that's, we have teacher specialists on campus as well, but again, they use the substitute system where someone comes in, those lesson plans are prepared, and that person would take the class over.
So the key is continuity in the instruction, in the system, is what you're trying to accomplish.
Yes, sir. This is key. We need everyone there so that students have a consistent teacher every day, and they stay on track to meet the standards and the work that has to get done for that day.
And you're listening to me?
Thank you for sharing the data. Gracias por compartir esta información.
Just so we're not making assumptions as to what's driving the improvement.
Could you clearly explain the leaves as a part of the movement here? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. I guess, so really, honestly, you know, one of the big pieces that we talked to our teachers about is just the importance that they are for students every day, and the need for them to be present and to have support. And so I think as administrators, that is the goal, to make sure that we support them, and that we ensure that they get the support they need to live there every day consistently. And of course, we always work with the human factor. We work with teachers, and we're always going to continue to support them. So having that is key also in building rapport with teachers and doing what's best.
I think it's also that we're paying attention to it. Look, last year, there was 1,263 teachers who had 20 days or more absences. Now, 300 of those were to FMLA, but 963 were not eligible for FMLA and still had 20 or more days. And so what we've talked to our principals about and asked them to talk to their staffs about is that the teacher is the most important variable in the classroom for instruction, for achievement, for supportive kids who have other needs. It's the teacher. Can't be effective, can't support kids even with SEL if you're not there. And so we're paying attention. This presentation puts attention on it. We pass, or put out DEC 8 regulation, which talks about attendance. And so all of those things combined to set the bar. And just like always, teachers will rise the level of expectations, and that's what they're doing.
Mr. Garza, what?
Thank you again for the presentation. One question that comes to mind is many teachers are also working parents. And can you help me understand a bit about how this system supports parents who are working in the schools, working teachers?
Para padres que están trabajando con los maestros junto.
So one of the things that, you know, the former principal and principals do is, you know, we know that teachers, when they have meetings, or there's things, activities that have to be done, that we let them know ahead of time, so that there's pre-planning for them, there's flexibility. But I think those are the pieces that, as, you know, the sooner teachers know, there's nothing last minute, they're planned out, it's a year-long calendar. And so having that flexibility and working with teachers to ensure that they're able to have that flexibility as a parent and allow for some of those pieces. If a child gets ill and those types of things, because we know that does happen. So once again, not forget about those components and really working with our staff so that they know the expectations, but we also are going to be flexible and helping support them as well as working parents.
Pero también con la flexibilidad para ayudarlos y apoyarlos a los padres.
Thank you.
Otra pregunta, gracias.
Good evening, President of Board of Managers, Mo Manai. Members of the Board of Managers and Superintendent Miles. My name is Dr. Laura Stoudt, Division Superintendent for the West Division. The purpose of this presentation is to compare discipline data from last school year.
I want to compare the information of this discipline of the year.
Apologies. I'll take a quick second to make sure that you can see it. All right, here we go. So the purpose of this presentation is to compare discipline data from the school year 2022, 2023 to 2023, 2024, so last school year to this school year, from the start of each school year to September 28. So again, for the first five weeks of school. The graph explains the progress made regarding discipline infractions. It also shows the top four highest infractions that occur each school year, and they are fighting, mutual combat, chronic failure to adhere to directives, inappropriate physical contact, and derogatory abusive behavior towards adults. So I'll go over the graph real quick so that you can follow through when I go through the rest of the data. So '22, '23, all campus data is dark blue. '23, '24, all campus data is light blue. '22, '23, NES, NESA-aligned campus data is orange. And '23, '24, NES, NESA-aligned campus data is gold. I will refer to the school years as last school year and this school year moving forward through the presentation. In looking at the bar graph for fighting mutual combat for all campuses, last school year, we had 277 infractions for fighting mutual combat, and this school year, 167. That's 110 fewer instances of fighting or mutual combat. For NES and NESA-aligned campuses, last school year, we had 214 infractions for fighting mutual combat, and this school year, 95. So I want to explain real quick that the schools that, you know, are NES and NESA-aligned this year were not last year, of course. And then I want you to note here that if you look at all campus data from last school year, 277 infractions, and then for NES and NESA-aligned, 214. So those are our most high-need campuses, and they have the most infractions. And they're getting the most support. Okay? For chronic failure to adhere to directives, all campuses, last school year, 313 infractions, and this school year, 136. 177 fewer instances of failure to adhere to directives. For NES and NESA-aligned campuses, last school year, we had 228 infractions for chronic failure to adhere to directives, and this school year, only 51. We're down by 177 instances of failure to adhere to directives. For inappropriate physical contact, all campuses, last school year, 129. This school year, 62. That's 67 fewer instances of inappropriate physical contact. For NES and NESA-aligned campuses, last school year, 66. This school year, 21. That's 45 fewer instances of inappropriate physical contact at NES and NESA-aligned campuses. And for the last one, derogatory abusive behavior towards adults, at all campuses, last school year, we had 147 instances, and this school year, 86. And at NES and NESA-aligned campuses, last school year, 95, and this school year, 44. We're down by 51 instances at NES and NESA-aligned campuses. These improvements are attributed to a district-wide commitment of high-quality instruction. More students engaged through the multiple-response strategies. 100% of students answering questions via multiple-response strategies. That's a goal. It's, we're pretty close, but that's something that we continue to work on every single day. But it's contributed. Students not sitting in the back of the classroom if there's room for them to sit at the front of the classroom, so they're not in the red zone. And more adults present in classrooms and in hallways. Administration in classroom helps to build relationships with students. They see them more. Hallway transitions from classroom to classroom are more structured. And so as you see, our data has improved for discipline, and I also attribute that to the teachers and campus administrators that have worked very hard in implementation of structures.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Martinez?
Thank you for the presentation. Gracias por la presentación, entonces, como creo, me pongo más viejo. Quiero asegurarme cuando se ven todas las escuelas. Other campuses, meaning not NESA?
The entire district, all four divisions.
So, again, so help me to understand, when you say all campuses, in the light blue one, it's 167 for the fighting mutual combat?
Yeah. So 277 is last school year at all campuses district-wide. And this school year, 167 instances. So comparing the beginning of school last year to September 28 for the first five weeks to this school year, 167 instances. So from last year to this year, this declined.
So that's what I guess, what I'm trying to understand, though, is if you look at NESA schools for '23, '24, it says 95. So there's 167, so that includes NESA schools.
So if you look at the orange, those are the NES, NESA campuses for all divisions for last school year, but they weren't NES and NESA at that time. And this year, they are NES and NESA, they're in the gold, and that's the new number, 95. So they've declined.
Yeah, I think the headline is, discipline is down all across the board. But because the NES schools and NESA schools contributed most to that discipline last year, the high discipline last year, the drop is mostly due to NES and NESA. But there's no question that discipline is down across the board, and that's a good thing. But particularly in the NES and NESA schools.
And then I have a follow-up question. With those instances, is this when they're sent to the team center? Because you mentioned that we see a lot of kids this year in the team center.
Well, we haven't seen a lot of kids in the team center. So usually, when a student, when they find there's other consequences, because that's a little bit more than just misbehavior in the classroom. So that's not a team center. These aren't team centers. Team centers are what students need to maybe improve their behavior. They're talking too much in class, something simple like that. And they just need to go to the team center and learn. I personally haven't seen students in the team centers, and I've been to many campuses. And I do go to the team centers to look. But these are the big ones, you know, when you're fighting, talking back, inappropriate contact.
And it also provides the principals and the teachers with another step. So let's say chronic failure to adhere to directives. You know, in one day, a kid three times didn't do what he was supposed to do. Well, we can, and it can be referred to as chronic disruption, but that kid might be sent to a timeout in the team center. It's one more option, and you're going to see later, when we talk about, not tonight, but in-school suspensions, you know, that is way down the possible.
Mr. Campbell, have a question.
I just want to, I want to make sure that I really get this, okay? So on the combat piece, so the 270 schools last year in the first five weeks had 277 incidents, correct?
Last year.
Last year. This year, and then when you look at this year, it's another 167.
Correct.
And then when you look at NES, at schools that were not NES last year, but the 85 schools we're talking about.
Correct.
Of the 277, or whatever, is that 277? 214 were at 85 schools.
Yes, that's correct.
270 schools were 277, and 85 contributed the 214.
That's correct.
So that's pretty substantial when you think about that.
That is very substantial, and just keep in mind, parents want safe and orderly environments. And by the way, the kids do, too. And that's why, you know, the discipline rules we put in place, which are not onerous, the kids are thriving. Yes, I mean, you know, it's not a perfect system. There are going to be kids who act out for whatever reason, you know, maybe legitimate reasons at home. But overall, the discipline is down. Kids are doing better. Talk to the kids. I've been talking to kids all the time in the schools. They like the fact that it's safe and orderly, and that the parents will, too, over time, parents are going to go to NES and NESA schools partly because of the safe and orderly environment.
Just a question on that particular piece. We can talk about it. So the decline in that particular mutual combat scenario, right, year-over-year, is largely contributed to by the change in NES, right?
Correct.
Right? And so what do you attribute that to versus the other schools? Because, right, we want to reduce these types of infractions across the schools. So what's the administration doing to make sure that whatever implementation there is in the NES schools is also being followed in the non-NES schools with regard to discipline?
Yes, and keep in mind, even in the other schools, it's down a little bit. But also, there's not as big a problem with discipline in the non-NES and non-NESA schools. And that's a good thing. And so the question is, can we continue to do it? Now, look, we have not put in the same discipline policies in the non-NES and non-NESA schools because we said this year, they can follow the discipline policies that they have. I do think the focus on instruction, the focus on improving instruction has already started to help raise the expectations and build a stronger culture in the buildings, all schools. And I think that is what we'll try to keep doing this year. And then next year, we will try to expand in NES or NESA schools.
Any other, Mr.? Yes, ma'am.
And so I heard you say that the focus on instruction, having teachers, administrators in the halls and in the classroom, that that's having a positive effect on discipline. Just to be really clear, are there any other discipline training or policies that you're doing with APs in addition to this? Or are we seeing this truly is the natural, the natural outcome of this different focus on instruction? Is there any other side thing you've done with discipline outside of focus on instruction?
There's a training program. We talked about discipline with principals a lot, and we talked about the three rules, broad rules, right?
Can you just share, just so everything is clear?
Just a minute. So no disrespect to any adult. Can't disrupt the learning environment, and no bullying. So pretty simple rules that all, I mean, this is not magic, right? This is, all schools across the country try to have those sorts of rules. But I think what's happening now, too, and again, we're only five weeks in, we're in seven weeks, but this is five-week data. So, you know, let's be careful about making too many predictions or generalizations. But we think that this is a good trend, right, already? And my prediction, because I've done this for, this is my seventh year, the discipline will stay low, and we'll follow this trend line throughout the rest of the year. So I think just raising the expectations, but also backing the principals. Speaker earlier talked about teachers wanting the right and having the right to make sure their class is sacrosanct and not have discipline problems. That's what NES does. You know, we move out kids, the principal says, or the teacher says, that kid is disrespectful. We'll move that child out to a timeout, and then send that kid back to the next class. But that's respecting the teacher, and that's allowing the teacher to be backed up when they have discipline issues. So you'd be loathe to find, loathe to find, or hard-pressed to find a teacher in the NES or NESA school system, the 85 schools, that thinks they're not being backed up on discipline. If that's happening, they should talk to the principal or talk to the executive director because we definitely support teachers on discipline in those 85 schools.
Oh, yeah. I'll add that, I think that some of the other campuses that are not in the NESA have picked up some of the systems, pieces of them, and have implemented them just on their own. And also tightening up of instruction and doing the MR strategies at other campuses. You know, just improving that also helps with discipline. Thank you. One other question. Do you already have a plan of how often you monitor this? Because I think it's great information, and we do want to know, like, is, you know, we just... Because I think it's great information, and we do want to know, like, is, you know, we just get lucky in the fall, or is it continuing? So what's the plan for monitoring the discipline?
We, we continue to monitor the data at each division. It's important for us to continue on a downward trend with the data, and it's important for us to, you know, prepare case for 2035. And so all of this, instruction, management in hallways and classrooms, all contributes to a student that is ready to move on to college. Thank you. Mr. Robson?
Just a couple of comments, and I think a follow-up question. So things are looking up, and for the schools, and I'm happy to see that fewer distractions are leading. Coming from this behavior infractions, to be clear, there have not been any reporting, requiring changes in any of the school system.
Just implementation, just implementation of the system, the processes, and just making sure that we are working with campuses, principals, leadership teams, teachers, every day. The feeder executive directors are on campuses every single day, all day long, and we meet and discuss what is it that we need to improve. And so through the division leadership and the feeder leadership, we will monitor data, and we are on campuses as well, I've been on campuses this week, maybe three days.
And so obviously one month doesn't make a trend, as you said. So I also concur that I'd like to see a continued monitoring of this activity throughout the year. But I also believe that one of the important benefits of the team center is that students have a friendly competition, and when they get there, they have sense of pride upon arrival. And I actually heard of one campus that, that a fourth grade math class, 100% went to the team center, because they all were A or E level. And so kudos for that level of engagement. And I guess the final question, does, you know, that I'll continue to rattlin' my mind is, does increased engagement alone lead to increased compliance when it comes to behavioral?
Well, they're busy learning and participating in the MRS strategies, the multiple response strategies. So they're busy, they're learning, you walk through the hallways, and you see them participating, writing on their whiteboards, turning and talking, and they're engaged. So I think that, you know, they're busy learning, which keeps them behaving.
Thank you, and I'll also just mention this school, that was Wayne Wright Elementary. So just kudos to that school and campus, I told them I would shout them out.
Any other, Ms. Andy?
Um, yeah, this is amazing. This is great, and this is something to be applauded, and I just wanted to say that, because this is, I think that it is important for kids to be engaged. I mean, I too have seen on tours and witnessed an almost full team center because of excellence at Highland Heights Elementary School. So I want to shout them out, and Acres Homes, because it's, it's something to be proud of, and this is something to be proud of, and I look forward to seeing this data throughout the school year. This is great work, thank you.
Just one more question. Obviously, we want even these kids to be in class as much as possible. What kind of supports are we providing to them, whether it's SEL, what are we doing with them to ensure that we can provide resources to them and their families to ensure they're still at school, and they're doing what they need?
Yeah, so, um, when, in the whole system, because it's a system, there are many other things that we're doing for kids to make sure that they're engaged, and also feel like part of the school. So you, if you read about the diet, or you've seen some of the diet in schools, and I know that sometimes we just focus on instruction. But diet is happening, so there are classes for, you know, spin and health, there's photography, there's dance, there's martial arts, there's gardening, there's yoga, all kinds of things that kids get on top of their electives. On top of that, we have our SEL coordinators, we have counselors, and school psychologists, when there's a need for that. We don't have a school psychologist on staff at every school, but when there's a need, we can call those, those folks in. We're still using things like Prounitas. We're also starting, you'll see the opening of four more sunrise centers this month. And so we, we're still attending to the needs of the, of the kids. And when, when a child does happen to be asked to go to a timeout, or to, you know, or suspended, the same procedures happen. It's not like they just go to the timeout or they get suspended. There's going to be a principal or adult talking to that child. That child will be appropriately referred if in need to, to counselor, or psychologist, or whatever that, that meets the needs. So you don't see a lot of that, because, you know, we actually don't see a lot of the discipline problems. I was at Shadydale last week, they had two students in five weeks that had a timeout. I was at JR Harris yesterday, they had no students in timeout all year. And so this, we think because the, you know, kids rise to the level of expectation too. And the expectation is that we're going to be, you know, we're going to support them, but we are going to challenge them. And the, the number of kids who have emailed me, or told other people, "Thank you for challenging me." I didn't like it at first, and you know what? I kind of like it now. The number of kids in the team center that told me that they liked going to the team center, you know, you've just got to get into the schools and talk to the kids, and they will rise to the level of expectation.
They have some pride, you know, and, you know, like you said, a little competition to go to the team center. If they're happy when they go, they get big smiles on their faces. I will add, for the non-NES, NESA campuses, we allowed, you know, for them to continue scheduling the way that they have in the past. And so many of the campuses that are non-NES have study periods in their schedules. And I guess I'll shout out Myerland, they've got Spark, and so they go to tutoring during the day, you know, and I think it's important for them to have that time to learn and get caught up and ask questions.
And let me say one other thing, I apologize, because the last month and this month, I've said I'm going to go to NES and NESA schools. Starting November, I'll be going to the other schools. This is one district, there's a lot of things going on, there's a lot of good things happening, and improvements in the other schools as well, I hear that from the division sups. But I physically have not been in many other campuses, and won't be until November. So you'll, you'll see me again in the, in the NES and NESA schools, and then I'll go to the other schools.
The division superintendents have, in whatever school we want to go to, and we've seen some great things, as well as the, as the senior EDs and our EDs of feeder, we're always on campuses, and then we welcome Mr. Miles to come. Thank you, anything else on this? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Next, we're going to be talking about special education, is that?
Yes, ma'am. And we have Director Stacy Venson, and let me have a quick preamble, and then I'll turn it over to her. I think 2011 was the first comprehensive report on the deficiencies of HSD with regard to SED. And then there have been many, many reports since that time. And one of the reasons for the intervention, and the board knows this, is special education. We have a couple of things that we have to do. One is meet state and federal law with regard to special education, and we have to improve special education services overall. Those are pretty broad, we've already outlined some specifics in the Destination 2035 Plan, and Dr. Venson has outlined some more in the action plan. And I want to say, you know, that it's been about a decade or more of challenges with SED. So we're excited to report some changes already, but again, there's no magic pill here. This is, this is a, this is a big ship that we're going to have to turn, it's going to take more than a year to do that. But I think you'll see that we have the SED department in good hands, and we're, and we're already moving in the, the right direction.
Thank you. Um, board members, I'm happy to present to you the Special Education Action Plan tonight. We understand that meeting compliance is just merely the baseline for what we need in special education, and like the superintendent said, we have failed our students for a while. And so there's a lot of work to be done, and we're committed to that work. I'd like to first start out with tonight, showing you some of the progress and successes we've had in just the short amount of time at the beginning of the school year. And so you'll notice that we were able to report 100% compliance on our initial evaluation timelines. We assessed 4,033 students last year for special education, and we were able to make 100% on that timeline. Along with that evaluation is the timeline to hold an annual ARD for initial services. And so we did miss that timeline, and then you'll see that that's in our key action plan, but right now, we're at four on that time. Where at last year, we were at nine at this certain, this specific time of the school year. We're also increasing our identification of students. So at this time last year, from the numbers, we have an increase of 1,253, which of course is a 9.3 increase. And then, as the division superintendents talked about the unit model, we have, we have placed our central staff, that were at Central Office in Special Education, into the division units. So there's definitely a collaborative atmosphere with the division superintendents and their teams to help with the compliance. And it really has reduced the ratio of support for our central staff to the feeder patterns that they serve. And I'm happy to report that we have certified teachers at every campus. We know that we're in a teacher shortage, and special education is always a difficult area to staff. However, based on the analysis of staff, we have the staff to really provide the services for our students when it comes to the teachers. So I'd like to get into the key action plans, and you have the specific plan with the specific actions in your packet that you were able to review before the meeting. And I would, and looking at that first action, again, it's about those timelines and getting there. And some of the things that we're doing is, number one, we're going to have all of our staff members take the Child Fine online course from Texas Education Agency. And as we onboard staff, they'll take it within 30 days or higher. We know Child Fine just isn't with our teachers, it's in the office, it's in the custodial staff that interact with our students. And so we want to make sure everybody is aware of the Child Fine process, as well as our community. So we're going to use some of our social media on how to get that message out to the community, that if you have students that you think may qualify for special education services, that this is how you can obtain those services here in Houston ISD.
I'm sorry to interrupt, has that already been rolled out to the teachers?
No, it's November is our, our timeline for that. And so, and then we know that we continue to struggle with our speech-language providers. We have had an increase of students who require speech-language services, and so that's something that we continue to really look at. We have increased our teletherapy services for the students that, that would be appropriate for. We're also really looking at a compensatory plan on how we can provide services, teletherapy after school on the weekends for those parents that, that would be appropriate for, as well as face-to-face services. Yes, so we do have consultants that help us as far as diagnosticians, our school psychologists, and our speech-language therapists that work within the department. We do have, of course, staff that are hired on full-time. I know that, as, as it was stated, that we, that we release speech therapists, and that that's a false statement, because we, in the August timeline, when we did not need consultants at that point in time. But that's something, as we, you see our increase of enrollment, and we get kids with different types of disabilities, and we're always assessing the need for different consultants. And so, we did not release speech therapists, in fact, we continue to recruit for them, and really work with our consultants to give that support. Quick question, when you say consultants, I'm sorry. I'm guiding you, so these are the contractors evaluating, outside contractors versus full-time employees.
I just want the board to understand that that context, because across the country, almost every school district has contracted services for very specific needs, like speech-language. Services contracted, como es, este speech, como habla, como los de habla, esto está ocurriendo en todas partes. If you try to hire a speech-language therapist for the school, it's really tough, because they can easily join these consortiums and work for private company. And then we're kind of, tell me if I'm in the spirit of it.
No, and another challenge is the medical model, where in Houston, where they can work in the medical field and make different types of salaries, and they went in public education, and so that's also a challenge in this area. Can I ask you before you go on? Before we move on to back up on two things? Can you just explain for us? So we've raised the level of initial evaluations, and we've got a timeline, and then we're trying to make sure we meet the mark on, once they come into the system, and once they have their ARD. And you talked about these numbers going up, but for people that are not used to the SED process, can you explain? Why does it matter that there are more people getting into SED? Why is that a plus, and why does it matter that we do it with concern? Can we just start from the beginning, from people that just don't have a SED kid and don't know what that process is? Yeah, so, some of you, I'm sure, were here when the Houston Chronicle article came back about Houston ISD for a lack of identification and Child Fine. And so that was many, a while back now, it's been a few years, but basically, the state had an eight-and-a-half percent. It was on their results-driven accountability, that looking at about eight-and-a-half percent of the population should be identified as, as receiving special education services. Then the office of Special Education, the National Office of Special Education, the offices internacionales, they're on 10 to 13 percent. So Houston, since that occurred, we've really been trying to catch up on making sure that we're identifying the students that could possibly be enough of it from special education services due to their disabilities. And so really getting that word out, that's what Child Fine is really about, not only within the schools, but in the community, etc. And letting them know about services and how they can access those services in the school. So federal guidelines also put timelines on each one of these things, and so there's specific timelines that, once an evaluation occurs, then you have a certain timeline until that ARD meeting is held. And so we have to report that annually to Texas Education Agency and our state performance plan. And so we'll be reporting that out every year in June, and we submit that to DEA. And so we were at 100% on the evaluation piece, where I'm concerned that my student may have a disability, a diagnostician, or a school psychologist assesses them, and we meet those timelines. The timeline that we missed is after that assessment is completed, then there's a timeline that that initial ARD meeting has to happen. And so, last year, at this point in time, we were at nine, we missed our timelines. Last year, the district was over five for the whole year. Right now, we're at four. And most of it is participation, because the parent quería reagendar, or in un caso, estabamos esperando un intérprete para un lenguaje específico, que para que el padre pudiera tener participación en la ARD.
Y déjeme añadir, desde un perspectiva de niño, no tienes, no he sido identificado, no estoy recibiendo los servicios que necesito por un buen tiempo, de hecho antes de, hace unos años hubiera tomado años este para ser identificado y después tomaría unos cuatro más meses para hacer la junta de ARD, que es la junta, los padres, los maestros para terminar el plan educativo individual, la discapacidad y lo que vamos a hacer con esto. Entonces para ser justo, el distrito ha hecho buen progreso en los últimos años, especialmente con la, nuestros observadores para tener, encontrar a esos números, esos niños y que suban nuestros números. ARD ha sido otra historia, ha sido mejorando por los últimos años pero aún no ven, hasta el año pasado que nos llenamos, ahora me ha bajado a cuatro, esto se ha dicho, es un proceso continuo, es una píldora mágica y tenemos que seguir viendo hacia adelante. Cuando tienen una, eh, evaluación inicial podemos ayudar a que este niño pueda ir y que no se vaya sin servicios por meses en vez de que vaya, teníamos que haber cumplido lo que teníamos que cumplir por ley, hay una guía de tiempo después de la junta ARD.
One other thing before we move on. So you talked about the unit model and you said the division unit model, we have a lower ratio of support. Can you explain what you meant by that? That's one statement and then also...
Y también pueden decirnos un poquito, un poquito más de este modelo de unidad.
Because what we're hearing from families is with the changes, they don't know who does what. So can you just, we don't have to go all the way in the weeds, but with these changes...
Entonces no tenemos que ir enturamemente, pero con estos cambios saben, antes sabíamos y antes conocemos a Talita y el título era Talita y en el distrito, ahora con el cambio de modelo, cómo es que ellos saben, cómo es que estos servicios tienen que ser proveidos, cuál es el modelo de unidad para esto? Porque los padres están confundidos por como quién con quién van.
Yes, so the unit model consists of a director, two coordinators and a manager. And so that unit model is that group of staff members are assigned to a feeder pattern. So across the four divisions, there are 24 teams assigned to that feeder pattern. And that, that unit model not only supports compliance, but they're looking at the instructional components across the continuum of service from the specialized classes all the way into the mainstream where you have...
Especializarles clases a lo principal, a donde tienen esos maestros donde puede que están empujando o proveyendo algún tipo de acomodación. Entonces cuando decimos que ha bajado, voy a dar un ejemplo, tuvimos seis, este, maestros de autismo y de apoyo que estaban sirviendo a más de 268 escuelas, entonces hagan el ratio y creo que son más de 40 escuelas por persona.
So now our largest feeder is I believe 19 schools and they have those four members supporting them. So we're really pushing not only geographically closer to the campus, because Houston is a huge district.
Houston es un distrito gigante y entonces estamos impulsando geográficamente, es más cercano porque esas unidades y apoyos están en las oficinas centrales en vez de las oficinas para que ellos puedan llegar a sus escuelas en una manera más rápida y más sostenible, entonces así puedan conocer a sus maestros y estudiantes que están sirviendo. Y esto es la parte de educación especial, la parte de este concepto de unidad, nos ha ayudado, mandar mensajes a los directores, los maestros de educación especial, que estos, ARD tiene que ser de este tipo y como hay este nivel de apoyo y enfoco y monitorio. Pero el concepto es diseñado para empujar a las escuelas, estos apoyos a las escuelas. Si preguntas a mayores de los directores, esto ha sido un este sistema más respondo, con más respuesta. Pero la confesión de los padres es que somos muy impatéticos a esto porque a veces yo no sé a quién llamar, yo le llamo al superintendente de la división y en el corto plazo ellos deberían hablar al director si ellos quieren, un poco de apoyo de las escuelas. Still, having said that, we just had this conversation on Monday and the division supers and the, and the central office staff are putting out a booklet, a handbook on every single position in the units and then also in the central office because you're right, there've been some musical chairs and so people may not know the person that always answered the phone before, maybe a different person or the phone number's changed. In the short term, I would say call your principal, the principal will call the right change. En lo corto hay que llamar al director y él va a llamar a las personas adecuadas.
I appreciate you putting that booklet or whatever you all are putting together. I think it's going to be really important for families and I hope that also is prominent on the website and easy for people to get to, so very interesting that information. Thanks.
Tengo una pregunta rápida, estamos, sé que hay muchas áreas, este podemos, estamos haciendo socios con diferentes agencias o grupos que son conocidos por ayudar con la educación especial.
So as far as just the contract services at this point, is, you know, specifically for the evaluation staff and the speech therapist. And then we also partner specifically with our 18+ programs with our students who are continuing on with employment services and we have Houston Community College, the Food Bank, etc.
El banco de comida y etc.
Thank you.
Gracias.
And so the next key action is very similar to key action number one, but it involves the reevaluation process. So every three years, a student is reevaluated for special education and so we're working on those timelines as well.
Estamos trabajando en estos días de tiempo también.
Quick question, please. Is there a reason why we're not, we're not the target is in 100%?
It actually should be 100%. To correct that on the slide, because we are, that's the federal compliance is the 100%. So our target is 100%, however, last year we were at 80% in that area. And then key action item number three is they improve the communication with stakeholders and monitoring reports. And so we know that we have a lot of trust to build within the community and the parents because we haven't provided that support for our students. And so we do have a parent portal where we're tracking the responses to our parents and so we want to increase that and that we want to respond within five school days. We also know that we're struggling with complaints and grievances from the state. And one area specifically is around our students who have gone to specialized programming, not being turned away from a school. So if I come to school and you go to a school and you perhaps not have a BSc, which is our behavior class there, then the parent is turned away and not instead of taken to the other or told to go to the next school. So one of the things that we're putting in place and we're actually doing it this month is making sure that our principals understand that process and what that looks like because we don't want to turn any of our families away and we want to make sure that all of our students have the support they need.
Y queremos asegurarnos que todos los estudiantes tengan el apoyo que necesiten. Y una de las cosas para este enfocar este punto, es un sistema y tenemos algunos directores o otras que no están seguros de las leyes y les dicen que no, algunos niños que no, no les estamos dando las acomodaciones.
I mean legally, we should provide those services on the IP until there is an ARD. And we know that some people have, some schools have waited until there is an ARD. And so we're fixing systems as we go to make sure, you know, but we don't know everything that happens and so when it does happen, we're trying to put these systems in place as you see, but other times when we see individual actions that go against special ed law or services, then we are trying to address that quickly.
How are the parent portal being disseminated to the parents?
So that is an area that we need to work on. It is on our website, however, it is kind of difficult to get to, so we're working with the technical to move that to the front of the website. And also really utilizing social media too, I think will be helpful in getting our parents some of this information.
Is it, is it being shared during the ARD meeting as well?
I don't believe so at this time, but that's a great idea. And then the last key action of course is to improve the quality of instruction because we want to make sure that our students are able to achieve and some of the key actions for that is specifically around our principal evaluation with 20% of it being compliance and 20% of it being the instructional component of progress of our students with, who receive special education services. To back that up is the special education department along with the professional development department will be conducting spot observations with our principals so that we can help guide that learning and so that they can really understand what they should be looking for in those classrooms and what they should be seeing. That, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Cruz-Arnold.
Thank you for the presentation. Were parents able to contribute to the development of this plan? So I have been meeting with one parent group and then I also have in our last cyclical review from TEA, there was a parent stakeholder feedback piece. And so it really concludes on some of the things that our parents have touched on tonight in public comment is creating those processes and procedures and really looking at that instruction in the classroom to ensure that their students are getting what they need within those classrooms. And I think that we can do that with our principals with those spot observations as well as the principal evaluation piece.
I have a question around these, this key action and the bullets underneath. So I'm not familiar with what a C1 school is, so I'd like to understand what that means.
Yes, so C1 and C2 is the, the schools that are rated C, but 75 and above, at 75 to 80 is C2 and C1 is 70 to 74.
Okay.
And we actually don't know those schools right now, we'll know them probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and then just some clarification on why A and B schools aren't included here because we know achievement gaps do exist at schools with A and B accountability rates.
Yeah, the notion there is that while we are still working on making sure all teachers teach well, we aren't putting in a lot of other structures in the A and B schools this year because they're autonomous. And again, make no mistake, we're still trying to improve instruction, but all the other supports and all the other structures are at the school level. So we, we thought this would be a more focused action just for this first year.
And thank you for explaining that. I think it would still be beneficial while we're running analytics to look at all schools because it may inform something for us.
Yes, ma'am, we, we'll still look at all the data for all the schools. This is a particular goal for this action, but yes, we'll be looking at all the data. Just like all schools took NWA this year regardless of NES or NESA.
Ms. Garzal, on that.
Thanks. Could you clarify, are there still staffing gaps you're trying to close? I saw we have certified SPED teachers at every campus, but I'm a little confused about anecdotal things like we need more diagnosticians, things like that. Can you only understand the staffing gaps that we have right now?
So the valuation staff is, it changes daily. I mean, today I can tell you that we have 37 schools that need speech therapists at this time. So the speech therapist is really the area where we have the gap.
And those are contracted services.
And those, most are contract services. We do have HISD-employed speech therapists, however, we're contracting out to try to get those services. That's the gap, yes, that's the gap, okay.
And there's one other thing. So special ed certified teachers, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have some schools where we're just finishing our leveling process. And so what, what happens, you have to determine how many students with IEPs you have, you also have to determine the number of hours of services because that makes a difference on how many special ed certified teachers you need. So after ARD meetings are done, you know how many hours of services a child needs. And so in some schools, we have too many special ed certified teachers and in some schools we have too few. And that process of what we call leveling, where we're moving some teachers to a different school because there's no need over here, is happening as we speak. And I think, again, correct me if I'm wrong, we have more teachers than we actually need. We're not going to get rid of them, but we have more teachers than we need to fill the vacancies, not vacancies, but positions that are, that we need in other schools.
So to clarify then, after the leveling process is complete, there could be some alleviation of frustration that some families are experiencing with the shortage of teaching.
Correct. Okay. Okay, let's, let's, Mr. Martinez, one more question?
Sure, sure. With regard to... You know, I can never have one question.
Nope. Yes, you can.
With regard to Jeanette's question about staffing and speech therapists, how soon do you think we can try to fill most of those positions? What is the plan to fill those positions?
So we are in a national shortage, which doesn't help us, however, we have seven in the queue right now and then we're looking at, again, increasing our teletherapy services because we just, we're at a place where we are having a difficult time finding them, even through contractors.
And then one follow-up comment. When we reach out to the schools or to parents to form the assessments of what we have, the resources we have, I think it's important that we stress as much effort, give as much effort to non-English speaking families because I think that's a big gap. Well, I know that's a huge gap. So I would encourage us to really look at that and how we do it in different languages and then do it outside of social media because, you know, that's not the only thing we can communicate.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Rovon?
Thank you for sharing the presentation, it's very helpful. And I wanted to make sure I understand, there were 4,000 students roughly that we currently serve, is that correct, that I saw on the slide?
We have 18,000, over 18,000 students with IEPs.
Okay, so now we, so does that meet the 10 to 13% that, that we were discussing before or am I confusing something?
We're right about, our overall enrollment is 185, so we're right at around 10%.
Got it, so that's what I was, I was trying to, because I was looking at the data, thank you, that helps me kind of understand the scope and scale.
I have a question. It's burning. So what you haven't spoken to, that we've gotten a lot of feedback about, is about the SPED students in the NES classroom. Can you talk to us about either how you're assessing how that's going or plans to make sure that those students are being served? Because we're getting feedback that the perception is they're not and I'd like to know kind of reality versus perception or if you are in a space where you're trying to determine because it's just, we need to, I mean, it's the elephant in the room, so can you please speak to it?
Yeah, I'll start and then please, bad. I know that there, there may be some people with the perception who have not been in our schools. I've been in the schools, I've talked to the principals. The SPED students are getting the services that are outlined on their IEPs. If that IEP says more time, then you're going to see kids with more time. If it says we're going to have one-on-one instruction or audible instruction, then you're going to see that. We even have film of that, we could show it tonight if you want, but we have people like in the team centers, kids getting services there in the classroom. So... So IEPs are IEPs, they're a legal document with special needs services and those special needs are being delivered as outlined in the IEP. But why don't you give your perception there?
Definitely, I would agree with that. And then, you know, we've trained the teachers as when you're doing the direct instruction, then whatever is in that IEP, that is what is expected in that classroom. And we're continuing to have that training. We have a PD day coming up and we'll continue with that training. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll try to speed it up, but you know, it's important to answer the questions, right? So we'll try to be as thorough as possible. The next presentation, we're, hold on, I'm going to pull it up. By way of preamble. Quality of instruction is the most important. Do we need to switch the HDMI cord?
No, no, it's ready. But well, because of the videos, it's not going to show here, but it's going to show on those screens. Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Look, the quality of instruction is the most important thing, that's the main job. I happen to be an instructional superintendent, but even if I wasn't, it'd still be the main job. And it's the main job of our principals, our teachers, the main job of the teacher is to teach well. That's the key. And the main job of the principal is to improve the quality of instruction and to support the teachers to teach well. And while I, we talk a lot about NES, I'm the superintendent of the entire district and the entire district is under intervention and the entire district needs to improve the quality of instruction. And so while there are things that we tried not to change in the other non-NES and NESA schools, the assumption should be and always should be that the main job of teachers to teach well, and that is the main job prior to me, and it will be the main job after me. And the main job of a principal is to coach the quality of instruction, support teachers and improve the quality of instruction so that achievement goes up. That was the intention before me and it will be the intention after me. And so even though at the board request, we're doing this short presentation on some of the NES things, it's important to note that high quality instruction is the goal everywhere and it shouldn't just be the focus on NES and NESA schools. The first part of Sandy Massey's, Chief Sandy Massey's presentation is going to be covering all schools. And then the second part, when we talk about LSE, that is a specific model to the NES and NESA schools. But I just want to keep that in mind because sometimes it sounds like we're just doing transformation at NES and we're not. We're trying to turn this whole ship, which includes all of the other schools.
Good evening, board. Nice to be with you tonight. This is an NES overview on all things instruction, but specifically around the NES model. So as Mr. Miles said, and I want to make sure, there we go. These are the things we're going to cover just briefly here, the multiple response strategies, which is a great way to engage in the way we've seen most students, I think, be eliminated from discipline. Coaching in the moment, you're going to see a video on this so that you can see what it actually looks like live in the classroom. DOLs, LSE, and then what do learning coaches do in the team center? So you'll see three videos tonight and I hope it will be a good view of the reality of what's happening in schools, which I know most of you have seen, but it'll give a different perspective. And a quick shout out to Shady Dell and Lockhart because they are the models for these videos. They did a great job. So the LSE model, first of all, is the 90-minute lesson. It is 40 to 45 minutes of grade level instruction. That includes a special education teacher moving about the room as required by law to help all students in the classroom, not just special education students. They're to do that with all students. But it includes those MRS strategies and of course coaching in the moment happens a lot during this timeframe. Then you have a 10-minute demonstration of learning. It's just about 10 minutes, which we'll talk about in a minute. And then about 35 minutes of that small group instructions, which is called LSE for the LSE model classes, that is moving the Ls and S1s to the front of the room and getting a strategic teaching time. And then the higher level students who mastered the objective get to move to the team center and be self-paced. So in looking at the MRS strategies, these are the three we're really focused on right now. The Think Pair Share, using a response card, and whiteboards. Teachers have practiced all of these, but the ones we're really focused on are these three right now because they provide the most internalization for the student. So why are we doing multiple response strategies? For one, it allows all students in the class to be engaged in the learning rather than the old school way of raise your hand if you know the answer and one student answers. Everyone answers the question at the same time via a whiteboard or via a response card or an ability to turn and talk with their partner. They are learning the objective, the standard by the state of Texas because they're more engaging conversation and writing and internalizing that objective. They're owning their own responses rather than waiting on someone else to respond and not having to opt in. They cannot opt out. They're having to engage. And then of course it's building their listening, thinking, reading, writing, speaking skills. It's constantly building the emerging bilingual database for those kids. And the scores will show that.
No. No. All right? Okay, so you did it for eight, great. Erase your boards, do it for 10. Let's go. Come on, let's stop. Does your partner have something you don't have? Do you disagree with your partner? Do you disagree with your partner?
So that's just a little snippet of what it looks like for students to be engaged in the classroom, all of them at the same time versus that old school way. This is one of my favorite coaching in the moment. Why are we doing the coaching in the moment? We are doing coaching in the moment because it supports immediate adjustments in the classroom, which impacts student learning in the moment. Old school way would be a teacher gets observed, an email gets sent to them with feedback and they may or may not even hear anything more about that feedback. But when we're fixing things as they occur, the students get the immediate benefit of that. And you're going to also see that in a video. Yeah, that's the principle, by the way, of Shady Dell.
Put your thumb up if you got something written on your whiteboard. Put your thumb up. Put your thumb up if you got something written on your whiteboard. Are you 100%? Waiting on one right here? Waiting on one? Let's go, baby, let's go. Five, four, three, two, one. Let's get something right in. Right now, I want you to go ahead and fist bump. Your shoulder's a partner. If you don't have a shoulder partner, right here, keep trick. You guys want to fist bump each other because you guys are going to do a turn and talk together. Fist bump, let's go, fist bump. Let's fist bump. All right, nice words. You're going to go ahead and you guys, okay. You guys are going to fist bump and then you guys, you're going to go ahead and turn and talk to the partner and you fist bump about what you wrote. Go ahead, go. Do the response card. Have them write it down. Add in the response card and then do a turn and talk. Do the whiteboard, do the response card. Share out. Whenever the response is wrong, add it. Add them to the response card. Okay? So even right now, script. Okay? Five. Break, good. Cap up your whiteboards, cap up, I'm sorry, cap up your markups, whiteboards, background, response card, elephant, response card, elephant. 10 seconds, nine, eight, seven. Pause for me a second. We're going to switch. We're going to use our whiteboards. You're going to write on your whiteboards what this text teacher would be.
So that's just a sample of what coaching in the moment should look like, where teachers are learning how to use the MRS strategies appropriately and getting that feedback so that kids get the benefit of it in the moment. Now going just specifically around LSE campuses in the model, everyone does a DOL, by the way, every single class, whether you push out to LSE or you finish your class in an hour and you spend the last five to 10 minutes in this mini assessment. Everybody's required to get data on did the students understand the objective and at what level did they understand it? So why do we do a DOL? Well, first of all, the DOL is five questions, 10 minutes. That's traditional. They could go four questions or six questions, but we typically do five questions. It takes no more than 10 minutes. But it's a quick assessment of today's learning and it does help us know what level students are at if it's an LSE class. It helps us to know who needs more strategic support to stay in the room and who is ready for self-paced rigor on their own and they move into the team center. So why do we do it? For one, it helps us to track students daily rather than waiting for an assessment in three to six weeks or even nine weeks before we start making decisions. It proactively helps us address the issues in the moment and that's what we want to do. It identifies proficient learners who can be self-paced, but it also helps us identify struggling students who can close the gaps on the same day with more teaching foundational learning. That's why we do the DOL. And then we have the LSE teach time. This is one of those things where everybody's like, what does LSE actually stand for? And here it is. It stands for L, the learner, S1, they're securing their learning. Those two are in the same bucket of they need to stay in the room with the teacher and get more reteach because they haven't mastered the objective during the instructional lens. And then if they're S2, they've secured the learning, that means they understood the objective and the A is they're accelerated. They know even better than grade level and that means they are strong enough to leave the room and be self-paced and push the level of rigor. Enriched means they are even stronger. So.
If everybody can please silence yourself once, I appreciate it. Thank you.
The enriched students, they will have an opportunity to actually do a very creative assignment in the team center, like grab a laptop and build their own lesson for the objective or build some slides, create or design something on their computer.
And then why do we have the LSE? It's very much like what we shared about the DOL. It helps proficient learners continuously push their brain lift and helps struggling students, struggling learners to be at grade level at the end of the lesson or as close to it as possible instead of waiting until we have some tutoring time on a Saturday. This is the last piece I'm going to share with you guys, the learning coach in the team center and what they actually do. Why do we have these people? They are so supportive. I remember telling the principals at the beginning of training, you're going to love your Ls and your teacher apprentices, they are going to be the lifeline of your campus because they're so supportive in so many ways. And they are. They help teachers with the basics like copying and grading and organizing, the team center keeping it clean. But more important, their main job is being in the team center, helping students that are S2s and As with an answer key so they can stay on task and they actually know if their answers are right or wrong. They keep them on track. They keep them focused. And yes, it's a difficult muscle for students to build, to work independently on their own, but that's kind of the point for them to build that muscle. And so it's just 20 to 35 minutes if they're in that space by the time they get in there and it's an independent muscle build time. But that's the main job of the learning coach and this is the last video. Any questions?
I've got one. On the DOLs, can you speak to the use of those in the non-NES campuses?
Yeah, for the non-NES campuses or even NESA campuses that have classes that aren't a push-out class, the only classes that push out are ELA and Math. So all the other traditional classes would have an hour-long class or even an hour-and-a-half class that they would maybe teach two consecutive lessons because they're blocked. So they only have that class on a Monday and Wednesday or Tuesday and Thursday. And so they teach maybe two objectives in one class period. The idea for them is to use those DOLs, which is the way I did it when I was a principal because we didn't have this model, at the end of a period to just visually know where my students were at the end of that lesson, how well I did as a teacher compared to how they were well able to master the concept. And it let me have an idea on what I'm going to do the next day for instruction. So do I need to do a do now or do some spiraling from yesterday's lesson? So it's not the same as being able to... So it's not the same as being able to...